All these trailers.
Never buy a camper.
I've never seen this before. We saw, I've only had a couple of them, really. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 28, 2023 regularly scheduled meeting of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. We have four matters on our petition. First matter is petition 5050, Richard DeBella. Are they here? Properties at 46 Rainbow Road, West Yarmouth, Mass. Applicant seeks to reverse the decision of the building commissioner and/or variance from section 401.1.1 to allow a camper to be occupied as living space on the property. Come on up. Have a seat.
Can you take for us?
We don't bite, usually. Could you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Yeah, I'm Richard DeBella.
Fratato Josie.
Okay. And we have your application here, but we also have a memorandum from the building department?
Yep.
Is it true that you've removed the camper?
Correct.
So you no longer wish to proceed with your hearing?
There's no need to, yeah.
Okay. So would you like to withdraw your petition without prejudice?
Yes, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Is there a point of order?
Yes.
How do we know as a butters that the trailer hasn't come back tomorrow? So should we go through with the proceeding?
Well, no, because I've got a memorandum here. There's no violation. So if there's no violation and they don't want to go forward, they're here to reverse the decision of the building inspector. The building inspector made an inspection of the property today and has stated in a memorandum that I'll read here in a second that they've removed the camper.
Well, there's, actually, there's two. There's one that's still there.
Okay.
And two Mercedes.
Pardon me?
There's also two Mercedes, used Mercedes on the property.
So my concern is-
Okay.
-the letter, I read the letter online.
Okay.
I guess it's stored with household contents. But let's be honest, those contents could be removed tomorrow and someone could move in tomorrow. So I personally think we should go through with the proceeding.
Well, hold on here, sir.
Okay.
Okay. These people have a, an application before the board. They wish to withdraw the application. So if they do so and the board allows them to do it, we don't have this on our agenda anymore. If you, if you have an issue, I would say contact the building department.
Can I ask a further question?
Sure.
Okay.
Why don't you come to the microphone and ask your question?
That's okay.
Yeah.
Steve Nado, 73 Silverleaf Lane. So if the trailer comes back tomorrow-
Excuse me, sir?
New appeal?
Could you identify yourself for the record?
Yeah, I said Steve Nado, 73 Silverleaf Lane.
Okay.
So does the clock start again if the trailer should reappear tomorrow?
If the trailer reappeared tomorrow and it was in violation and the building department made a, an inspection of the property and determined it was a violation, they would send out another violation letter. That's my understanding.
Okay, because the concern I have is if that happens, he appeals, he moves the trailer again before the next appeal, this is going to go on forever.
Can I say something?
No, not yet. Wait, 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 wait. We, we can't-
It's a legitimate concern for the neighbors.
Yeah, I know that, but, but we really, we can't deal with that. We can only deal with what's in front of us right now.
Hypothetical, but-
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you. Ma'am? Why don't we bring it back this way, yeah? Okay, so you'd like to withdraw your application?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Nope. I'll make a motion to withdraw the application as requested.
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
One second.
Any discussion on, on the motion? Hearing none. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries unanimous. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. The next petition is petition 5051, Renee Marshall Bryden, 341 North Main Street, South Yarmouth, Mass. Applicant seeks a variance from 401.1.1 and 401.2, 401.1.2 to allow renovations to a camper on her property. Good evening.
Hi.
How are you tonight?
Good.
Please identify yourselves.
Renee Bryden, 341 North Main.
Okay.
My name's Anne Engstrom, Dennisport, Six-Dory Lane.
Okay. Are you part of this petition?
I own the camper in question that's being renovated, so I'm just present with the title so that if there's any question-
Okay. So tell us a little bit about this situation here and tell us how you think that you meet the criteria for a variance.
So we, she brought her camper to my property to renovate it, and it's, the way the property's set up, that's where the water and the electricity hookups are. And it's also the flat part. And she is taking it and moving it to Maine. The letter alleged that there was someone living in it. I understand that it's not in the proper place. But I had a boat in that spot for the last five years and there was never an issue. And other folks on the street have campers or recreational vehicles, so I wasn't aware that it was an issue. Now I am, and it will be moved.
So it will be moved?
Yes.
November 1st, it's moving up to Buxton, Maine.
Okay.
It's, it's not livable. I had purchased it, purchased it from a small dealer and they were not forthcoming. It should have just needed a paint job. And the subfloor has damage at bump outs and it's been a little bit beyond my skill level. And to get a contractor cut, to come and do it in a more timely manner has been difficult. So whether the renovations are finished or not, it's still moving to Maine as of November 1st.
Okay. Well, ma'am, you're aware of this violation notice, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so what are you asking the board to do?
Well, again, I, as part of this whole thing, I believe that I was reported by my, it's a divorce matter. Because like I said, I wasn't aware that anyone else on the street was slapped with violation, having it in a similar place. And because it was temporary and there's no one living in it, that was part of the violation. There's, it's not livable. I'd like that to be returned or-
Well, whereabouts is it parked on the property?
In the driveway.
In front of the corner of the house?
Yes, off to the side.
And you're aware that you're required to have it behind the corner of the house?
Yes, but there's not a space because there's a drop-off there. It would have to be, right, I am aware now, I wasn't before. But like I said, I had a boat in that same spot and I was never given a notice of violation at that point. Had I known, I wouldn't have put it there. But it is a 40-foot fifth wheel, so it's not easily moved.
Okay. So you're asking for a variance. Can you tell us how you meet the criteria of a variance? Do you know what the criteria of a variance is?
I, I don't. I just, like I said, I, it was a temporary thing. It wasn't, it's leaving. When I spoke to Tim Sears, he said that I should go through this process and apply for the variance and that if it was going to be moved, it, it wouldn't be an issue. We just didn't get it done in time. But like I said, she's booked her transport and it is going.
And you're aware of the, the section of the bylaw that you're in violation, that it's in front of-
Yes.
-the front corner of the house and it needs to be behind that?
Right. But the location of the house and the property, there isn't necessarily room to do that because of the layout of the land. There's a hill and a drop-off.
And you're saying nobody occupies it right now?
Correct.
I did take some pictures today. You can see that there's never been water hooked up. The subfloor is out. There's no furniture. There's no personal possessions. It's just tools and paint at this time.
Okay. All right. Is that all from, okay. I think we're going to go to the board right now for some questions. Anthony, do you have any questions for our petitioner?
Yes, I, I do relative to just if you've analyzed what would, the cost of it would be to move it now or, you know, during an interim period before November 1st.
To have somebody come out and move it, they're asking $300 to $400 every time it's moved. And to book it has been extremely difficult. And if we move it, I still won't have access to power or water to finish what I can before it gets moved out of state permanently.
Anyone else? I'm good.
Good?
I'm good.
All set? Okay. Jay?
Who's doing the renovation?
We are. I've been, Renee's been helping me, but we've been doing it together.
You're doing yourself on site?
It's, it's going. It's going. But with the subfloor on the side out, there's a bunch of rot that no one disclosed at time of purchase. And when I went back to the dealer and said, "I've removed the flooring," and, and this was really beyond me, and I had explained that to you before purchasing it, they kind of did a, oh, this was an as-is sale, and this was a dealership out of Whitman. So I-
And they wouldn't take it back to fix the problem?
No. They refused and they stopped returning calls when I had asked about any kind of refund in terms of, I told them I'm going to have to hire a contractor with specialty jacks and tools. And they kind of did a-
Well, I, if, if there's nobody living there, at least you don't need a variance for the first part that you requested, which was, you know, no one living in it. So that, so what you really only need a variance for is just parking it there until November.
I'm, I'm still living at Six-Dory Lane in Dennisport.
Right.
And I have spent zero nights in the camper.
Right.
It was full of-
Like I said, you're not asked, you don't really need to ask for that part of that, that, that is a variance. You're just looking for parking purposes. It is a very large camper.
Yes.
And it sticks out almost to the road, or very close to it, anyway. And we have very clear bylaw, so I'm not sure what exactly the board will feel about. But we do have a pretty clear bylaw that at any time, if it's parked in the front, that's, that's really a violation. So I'll leave it to the rest of the board for questions. Set. Yep. Gone.
So you're moving it to Maine on the 1st of November? And why, what's that date? Why that date?
Um, I found a private landowner that is adjacent to where my nephew lives. I have an adult nephew in Maine. And just to be closer to family and get out of, get off of Cape Cod, pretty much, it was, where can I bring it that's safe? So right now, they're putting in a gravel road and an electrical outlet for me in Maine. So it's been kind of a, a waiting period because I could have put it in storage and still been unable to work on it or leave it in place, try to get it as done as I can, knowing that November 1st is coming. And that's when the electrical and the road will be in there for me up in Maine to just bring it there and keep it.
Okay, so the site in Maine is not ready yet?
Correct. The, the gravel road is being put in, not this week, but the second week of October. And the power is being put in the third week of October. So it, it was a matter of, if I can have it out of there before November 1st, that's my goal. But I, I don't have control over that. And there was, there's no year-round places in the state of Massachusetts. So it-
What about the Dennisport location? Why, why is it in Yarmouth?
I've got the tools.
She has more power tools than I do, frankly. And I live on Drury Lane, which is a very small, private, narrow road with low-hanging power lines. So it would not have been possible for me to have it put on that property, even though my parking area where I'm renting is significant. They wouldn't have been able to get it in. The fire trucks have to do clearance checks every year because it is so narrow.
Thank you.
Okay. Barbara, any questions?
No, I was going to ask the same question that John asked. So he asked my question, you answered. Thank you.
I, I have a few more questions. Can it be moved right now, if you wanted to?
It, I, it could be moved. I'd have to hire somebody. With the size of it, when I had it delivered, I had hired somebody to do it and it was $700.
The money aside, I'm saying, did the, did the wheels work and all that stuff? It's movable?
It's, it's roadworthy. It's not a-
Is it registered?
Um, no, I have the title. I've been, I was trying to see if I could get them to take it back. So it, right now, it is not registered, but I have the title with me today.
How are you going to get it to Maine if it's not registered?
It's going to be registered and insured before it's moved, obviously. Yes.
Okay. How long has it been there?
Second or third week in July. So it's been back and forth with the dealership for the last six weeks.
Because this violation notice is July 14th.
Right. When she had spoken with the gentleman from the board that issued the letter, he had said, you know, "I'm sorry about the circumstances. Don't panic. You know, if nobody's living there, take a breath, go through the appeal process, but it shouldn't be a problem." And that's kind of how he phrased it. So if I had known that this was paramount that it be moved immediately, I guess I could have put it in storage sooner. But then I wouldn't have been able to work on it. So-
Is this November 1st, is that a hard and fast date?
Yes. If I can get it out the week prior, that's my goal. But he said, the, the landowner said, "Definitely by November 1st, I'll be ready for you."
Have you received any fines thus far from the town?
Not that I'm aware of. No, I know when I filed the appeal process, they said that puts that on hold until-
Okay, so there was nothing prior to that?
No.
Okay. All right.
Again, wasn't intending to violate, it was to help a friend get her on the road, that kind of thing. So-
Sure.
Do you have, who's going to be taking it to Maine? Do you have somebody lined up already to do that?
Yes. Yes. I, I, I didn't bring the name with me, but there's a transport company.
Okay, so you're hiring somebody?
Yes. Yes. I'm not moving that myself.
And they're scheduled already?
Yes. Yes, they're aware that November 1st is, is the absolute move date. And they did say they had availability the week prior, should the space become available to move up sooner.
Okay. Anything else at this time? Nothing further from the board? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, is anybody here who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Please come to the microphone. And seeing none, we're going to close the petition to the public, open it for board discussion. Thoughts? Anybody like to, Jay, what are your thoughts?
No, I mean, obviously, they did it not knowing there's nobody living there. So, I mean, it's going to take them a little while to move it, one regardless. And the 1st of November is five weeks away, I think, about. So as long as, I think, we put a drop-dead date, that it'd be off the property by, say, November 3rd or so, the end of that week, I think it's a reasonable thing to do. But it is a-
Well, we're not talking about, so are you suggesting that-
It is a variance.
-we continue this matter until, what's our next date in November?
November 9th.
Got a lot of people on that day?
Nobody yet.
We'll, we'll hear from others as well, but my thoughts were along the lines of maybe we continue this matter until the next hearing date. You said you'd be off the property by November 1st. If you are, please notify us and we can take you off the agenda.
Okay.
How do the others feel about that?
That sounds like a reasonable solution.
Anthony?
Agreed. That's reasonable.
So is there a motion to continue this matter until our next hearing date?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the matter? Hearing none. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? Okay, so you've got until November 1st.
And do we call and tact you directly or just a general letter to the zoning board?
You can, if you could just drop a letter to our administrative assistant, Dolores, that you have moved the trailer as of November 1, and we wish you the best in Maine. Okay?
Best of luck. Thank you.
Have a nice night. Okay.
All right.
Okay, the next petition is Arian and Imelda Salamini. Property location is 51 Mill Pond Road, West Yarmouth, Mass. It's in an R-25 zoning district. The applicant seeks to modify decision 4968 dated August 10, 2022, and/or a special permit per 104.3.2 subparagraph to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming structure and/or a variance from section 203.5 for side setback relief. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Arian Salamini.
Could you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Arian Salamini.
Okay.
Imelda Salamini.
Okay, hi. How are you tonight?
Good, thanks.
Okay, why don't you tell us about your petition?
Sure. So we were here last year to, we came, you know, before the CBA last year to require, to request permission to add a deck to our house. And we wanted to renovate the, the current house. So to backtrack a little bit, initially, we wanted to just renovate the old building, the pre-existing non-conforming. And after putting the addition in for the one we applied before, the builders that went there to do the framing decided to move walls and demo it. So we did not realize that we needed a permit to demo it. So after talking with Mr. Inkley and Mr. Grills, you know, we are very sorry to do that without asking for a demo permit, but that wasn't our intention. So now, after consulting with them, they suggested to come here for a reason rebuild. So the plans in front of you are the same plans as last year that we submitted for this special permit to add a deck. So we want to rectify what we did and we want to see how we can best go forward.
Okay, all right. You?
Sure.
Anything else you'd like to add at this time?
No, just when the framer went there, the house was in very bad shape. So they started moving things and literally the, the wall, it was like a, it was like a cardboard. And the two-by-four, it was like one-by-one. And then even our inspector told us when he said-
According to Mr.-
Those are one of those Sears house-
They love homes, they said.
And it was like, I mean, they did the, the right thing, but you should have asked, which we didn't know.
Okay.
Truly apologetic about it, so.
Okay, all right. Well, let's, we'll see what we can do here tonight.
Okay.
We're going to have some board questions. Barbara, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, I'm just concerned if there's anything you can ameliorate by the, the side setback is so close to the-
So the, we're building on the same foundation that was there. The addition is within new setbacks. But the pre-existing non-conforming structure, the foundation is solid.
I, I think, as I recall this petition, Barbara, last year, that Race Road-
Yes, the paper road.
-right there, it's not, yeah, it's not developed in any way. I, I think the thoughts of the board at that time where that was never going to be developed, so we gave them-
Not to worry about that. Okay.
Okay.
The thing we're making a bit better is the front setback, that small deck at the center. We are going to remove it like it was a step into the house right now. We're going to move that to the side. So we're removing a, a little bit, but-
The deck, is that what you said, the deck?
Not the deck. It's like the landing where, right now, is the current entry to the house. We're going to be getting rid of that one. Yes. So we're going to move the entry to the side.
It's marked on the plan, it's called the deck.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that'll be eliminated. Okay. All right.
Other than that, it's the exact same?
It's the same exact as we submitted last time, but again, forget it.
Anything else right now, Barbara?
No.
Okay. John?
No, I don't have any.
The, the front- The, the front part of the house, the, where the existing house was, you're still going to use the same foundation?
Exactly the same.
The same?
Yes.
Yeah, because the proposed addition was fine in the back, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, the addition is, is purposely put within the setbacks.
Okay, so as long as you're using the same foundation?
Yeah.
Really doesn't change much. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Anthony?
Nothing for me on this.
Okay. Question on the proposed addition. I'm seeing two cesspools that are in the middle. I presume those are going to be removed.
What page is that, sorry?
That's on your site plan right here. See these little round things right there?
Oh, hold on.
I think those are existing cesspools. I would imagine they're going to be removed. I would think the town would require it.
Oh, for the-
You're going to put a foundation there anyway, right?
It's already there. Yeah, so they were removed.
Those are gone. Oh, yeah, that is. Okay.
So we started the foundation in October last year for the addition. And then the foundation person took till May to, I mean, to be finished. And that's when we started with the framing and-
Okay, all right.
Hands were here.
Okay. Anything else from the board at this time?
One quick, is there a driveway?
No, there isn't a driveway.
Just going to park on the lawn?
We're going to park on the side, yes, of the lawn, right in front of the entry.
Would you be, would you be able to just ask them to revise this site plan and draw in a driveway?
Yeah.
So you have one on the property, because they are required.
Sure. Absolutely. And would you, would this suffice from the architect or would you like them from the surveyor as well?
If you, if you want, if you do a nice job and draw one in-
Oh.
Okay, and-
It's okay, we'll ask the professionals.
Yeah. I think if we do that, we can, that'd be okay.
Okay, sure.
Don't cost you any extra money on that.
Okay.
Just so we have an identifying area for the driveway.
Yeah.
One minute, please. Who have any other? Is there anyone in the audience wishes to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, is there anybody here who wishes to speak in opposition of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone and identify yourself.
Eileen Monroe, Four Race Road, West Yarmouth. This has been going on for so long that it's become a real problem for the neighborhood.
Okay.
First, we had people working for them that were trying to use electric and water from other neighbors to build this, rebuild this house. I don't, I've never heard of that before. The other thing that bothers me is that the town give Race Road to that property.
No.
Okay, because for the last two years plus, all these forms have been sitting on that town, on Race Road, which I don't understand why it should be. Did they have a proper septic testing? Because the water table is about the same as the, the stream that goes right near it. This should have an above-ground septic.
That, that would not be our purview. That would be the board of health that would deal with that.
We've been through a lot of things. We didn't know anything about this property until we got a card in the mail saying that there was an approval from the board of appeals to put a deck on. We heard nothing about anything that was going on. I think that was unfair to the neighbors. They wanted to know what was going on in this tiny lot.
Well, I, I don't handle that, but my understanding is we send out a butter notices to everybody within 300 feet.
And I'm about that.
Okay, that's about all I have to say.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this petition?
Good evening. My name is Charlotte Harvey. I live at 47 Mill Pond Road. My property directly abuts the property that they're building on. Since they started having contractors come there, the contractors have used my driveway to unload a lot of the stuff to go in- a lot of the stuff to go into the backyard. I've repeatedly asked them to stop. It still gets used. There are also, yes, I live there by myself, and I find it very unnerving when I have these contractors knocking on my door, asking to use my power, asking to use my water. And when I have to leave the house, it kinda makes me nervous, thinking that they're gonna be over there using it anyway, because it's right there facing that property. As far as the notice that we got for the last town meeting, these people actually told all of us that all they were applying for was to put decks on the house. That's why none of us showed up, because we felt that, okay, they're just putting decks on. We had no idea that they were planning on doing a two-story addition on this very small piece of property. They talk about the unlivable house that it is. My house actually was built identical to that house. It has since, over the years before me, had additions put on. But the roof, all that stuff, it's all livable. They, I believe, knew what they were doing when they took that house down. That was their plan all along. And I think that they're kind of fooling you guys as well as they fooled all of us. And yes, all of us neighbors are really aggravated about the whole thing. Personally, I think they should have to put up a fence before they can start doing more stuff, because I don't want all these contractors going through my yard and through my driveway. They have done nothing but lie to all of us since they bought the property. We were happy that somebody bought the property, and they were gonna redo it. All of us were, until we all started getting lied to. And I can see the smirks, but you know you did. You lied to all of us.
Ma'am, let's, let's-
So anyway, okay, but that's all I wanted to say. They're just fooling you, just like they fooled us.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none. We're gonna close this petition to the public, open it up for board discussion. I have, do have a question. Are you, is there any electricity on the site right now?
There used to be water and electricity until the demo happened.
Are you planning on getting a temporary service?
Yes, of course. And we were not aware that the contractors were asking neighbors.
It's not really our business, but would you mind speaking with your contractors?
Absolutely, yes, of course.
She does have the right to call the police if she wants to, and-
Yes, and-
They would be trespassing on her property, but just to be a good neighbor, it probably good.
Absolutely, we, the house was full of, you know, with, it had electricity, it also had water. We just had to go and get those shut off immediately, right after the demo. But it was there, and, yeah, so.
Okay.
If you do need to see videos of the house in the previous condition, I do have it inside for the record, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
That's a requirement, building requirement, isn't it? Power and water?
Well, that's a, no, you're not required to have water. You should have power. You can have generators if you want to, but that's, that's a, that's another matter with the neighbors. John, what are your thoughts on this petition?
Well, we previously approved, I think it needs to go forward now, especially. And, you know, there's a couple issues there that I think need to be addressed. But other than that, I plan to support it.
Okay. Barbara?
Um, I'm feeling a little lost here, because I wasn't at the, what happened August 10th, so.
Well, that was, that was a year ago or so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, they're here, by the way, to either seek to modify that one or ask for a new one. That last one was a, I believe it was an extension, an alteration. This is a raise and replace.
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Anthony, what are your thoughts?
I am curious to just how long the construction's intended to take if you get approval.
So we were hoping within the year to finish it. That was the original intention, too, to be done by this year.
I think with the, personally, I think with the prior permission that we granted previously, it's, what they're asking is in line with our prior decision. It's hard to say no to that already. We've kinda gone through it before. But, you know, would like to acknowledge the neighbors and make sure that there aren't any issues moving forward, even though it's not really our purview, just, you know, for your own sake.
Okay. Jay?
I know when we, when we originally approved this, we were happy to see the property to be fixed up, which was, was something we were happy about. And, you know, if they're going to replace the house that was there, and really, really what they're doing is just replace that with like, is from what I understand. So it's using the same, same footprint and same look and feel and size and shape of the house that was there. I think this is a reasonable thing to go forward with and approve as a raise and replace. An expansion, I guess. They already have the expansion, but I don't know if we have to include that or not.
Well, the addition that they're proposing to put on, it should be noted, does meet the setbacks.
Yes.
Both side and rear, so they're not asking for any of that relief. We did give them relief in the previous decision, but we would have to take a look at that again. We did make a determination that we didn't think that Race Road would ever be developed.
Correct.
And so as a result, we allowed them to basically use that as some side setback relief, knowing that they wouldn't intrude on any neighbor or future neighbor's privacy. I do think it's a reasonable request. I do think they meet the criteria under the bylaw. As we said before, and I, I think we'd probably like to say again, it's always good to have good relations with your neighbors.
Yeah.
I would recommend that you reach out and try to amend any hurt feelings or misunderstandings. Have a discussion with your contractors and tell them to access the property over your property. You can certainly do that right through the front here. And I would get a temporary service as quickly as you can, because you're gonna need one.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're not blasting your neighbors out. And, and so you're thinking this is gonna take about a year for you to complete?
We're hoping to, yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, again-
Can I just assure the first lady about the septic? The one that she sees, those are extensions for the septic. They're going to be cut, and they are coming now. So she sees two extensions right now, so septic actually is under. Those are extensions, and now that it's been leveled, they're going to be cut, and they're going to be covered. So it's not septic at that level.
All right.
Just to make sure that the first lady, she was, you know-
Just always a good idea to keep in touch with your neighbors, and so everybody's on the same page. Anybody prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve a special permit, which I believe they need by the bylaw to raise and replace and include any of the provisions in the previous, previous approval, which include the-
So you want to incorporate the previous decision into the new decision? The findings of the old decision into the new decision?
I think that's a reasonable thing to do.
And that the petitioner has met the burden under the bylaw of being not substantially more non-conforming, no undue nuisance, sadness, or congestion, and keeping in the, with the purpose and intent of the bylaw.
Yes.
Anyone else care to have any discussion on this before moving it to a vote? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimous. A decision will be drafted. Once it's clocked in with the town clerk, 20 days must elapse. That's an appeal period. After that, you can contact our administrative assistant, Dolores. She will give you a copy of the decision. You need to take it to the municipal county registry of deeds, record it, and bring a copy back for our records.
Okay.
All right? Good luck. Before you go, you did request a variance. We would ask that you request to withdraw that without prejudice.
We do, yes.
You do.
Some moved.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that's withdrawn without prejudice. Thank you very much, and have a good night. All right, hold on here a second, let me. Our next petition is petition number 5053. Matthew and Pamina Marino. The property is located at 21 Lewis Bay Road in West Jarmouth. It's in an R-25 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit for 104.3.2 sub-paragraph to, to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming structure and/or variance from 203.5 for side setback relief and/or a variance from 203.5 for maximum building coverage. Take your time. Where do you want that, Dolores? You want that setback just a little bit right there?
Step back for the back, Matthew.
Yeah, just right kinda back kitty-cornered towards us right there. I think we tried to get it on a camera somewhere.
And this one, can I use this?
Uh, well-
Can you use one at a time?
I'll try.
Yeah. You can set that one up right behind it then, if you wanna break one down. Uh, yes, everybody have the plans?
Yeah.
Yes, we do. I think we're good right now. I, I don't know, has everybody had a chance to take a look at the property?
Yes.
Yes. I think we're all very familiar, so.
So, good evening.
If you could identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Matthew Marino. My home is located at 21 Lewis Bay Road in West Jarmouth, Massachusetts. So for the past 10 years, me, my wife, and my children have been coming to West Jarmouth, enjoying Lewis Bay, Seagull Beach, and Crowell Beach, located three tenths of a mile at the end of Crowell Road. I'm looking forward to staying on Lewis Bay Road and making it home for years to come. Here are some photos of my existing home. The existing home was built around 1950 and sits on cinder block. Those blocks have shifted over the years. The floors are uneven, the walls are not insulated. And twice a year, I crawl on my belly through a ground-level window opening to drain water from the pipes so they don't freeze. The roof has required added support to prevent further settling. The home smells of mold and mildew, and I've replaced components of the sill that were infested with termites. My home is unhealthy and it's unsafe. I am requesting relief from the zoning board of appeals for a variance and/or special permit to raise and replace the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. Variance relief is requested under Section 203.5 for left-side setback and lot coverage. Special permit relief is requested under 104.3.2 for left-side setback in lot coverage. My existing home left-side setback is 7.4 feet. I've submitted a plan of land dated September 1st, 2023, that shows my proposed left-side setback to be 7.8 feet. By this, I intend on reducing the existing non-conformity. I'm proposing a two-and-a-half-story single-family dwelling. My proposed home would conform to all other setbacks at front, right, and rear. And my height, at 34.5 feet, is less than what the bylaws allow. In Section 203.4, the bylaws allow for a habitable attic. My plan would have a habitable attic space of less than 50% as allowed in the bylaws. In the table of dimensional requirements provided in the bylaws in zoning District R-25, the bylaws were established for lots containing a minimum of 25,000 square feet and a minimum of 150 feet of street frontage. For a property owner with a lot this large, setbacks and lot coverage limits can easily conform. Why am I seeking relief from this board? My lot has only 6,600 square feet and only 60 feet of street frontage, and a literal enforcement of the 25% lot coverage on 6,600 square feet is a hardship. The narrow shape of my lot is only 60 feet wide and 110 feet deep, is also a hardship. Number three, I intend to show the board that relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this bylaw. In front of you are photos of area homes. These are homes located in and around the neighborhood of Saint, of Lewis Bay Road. These were inspiration for my proposed home. As described in Section 103.2.2, I intend to show the board that my proposed home is consistent with the character of the neighborhood and the town. These are homes with similar design features to my proposed home. I believe views of the ocean should not be just for those who can afford to have oceanfront locations. I believe these examples of West Jarmouth homes do not provide a nuisance, congestion, or harm to their neighborhood or to the town. In front of you are plans of a home built at 15 Lewis Bay Road. This home located just two houses away from 21 Lewis Bay Road, on the same side as my proposed home. This home was rebuilt as a raise and replace. The board granted relief on two sides for the owner to build their home 38 feet wide. This house covers close to the maximum lot coverage allowed in the bylaws at 22.75%. It's just under 1.25%. This home has nine-foot ceilings on the first floor, eight-foot ceilings on the second floor, and attic space as shown in their building plans. This makes it a two-and-a-half-story home, which is the same as my proposed home. However, my proposed home is narrower at 36 feet wide, and I am asking for relief only on one side. Yet these owners have written a letter of opposition to my proposed home, calling my home extreme- calling my home extreme and obtrusive. Another home located at 21 Louis Bay Road, whom I had the pleasure of meeting, the owners. They are a wonderful, kind couple, and who I approached them to show them my proposed plan. They gave me a tour of their home. This home is also located just two homes away from 21 Louis Bay Road, on the same side, and was also a raise and replace. This home is also two-and-a-half stories. I have...I approached my neighbors. I have nine neighbors that signed in favor of my proposed home. If they'd like, I'd give this to you.
You can submit it. You can submit that. Yeah, we can...we'll enter it in in a minute. You can bring it up.
This is a list of nearby abudders whom I met to show my proposed plans. I showed these abudders my proposed plans, and I asked these abudders if they would support my proposal. Everyone that I met, with the exception of one neighbor, signed that they would be in favor of my proposal. In the short time since submitting my application, the board has received letters of opposition. This is a direct result of some false and inaccurate information that was spread about my proposal with the intent to gain opposition against my proposal. These are false statements caused many of my neighbors to then change their position. I would like to provide some clarification of these false statements that were spread. I am not proposing a home 46 and 1/2 feet tall. My site plan, as provided by my land surveyor, references height above sea level at 46.5 feet. My proposed home is to be 34.5 feet tall, as measured from the average street grade. This proposed height is under the height limitation as described in the bylaws Table 203.4.2 and Section 203.4. The building commissioner has reviewed my proposed plans and signed my application submitted to this board. I am not seeking relief for height. Those opposing me want me to conform to the side setback as described in the bylaws. They want me to conform to lot coverage of 25% as described in the bylaws. However, when I submit my proposal for height that is within the allowed in the bylaws, they still say no. My neighbors are opposing the number of bathrooms in my proposed home. I have daughters, and bathrooms are a necessity. And thankfully, the bylaws do not limit how many bathrooms. The fact is, lots on my side of Louis Bay Road are small and close. We all bought our homes knowing this fact, and we have been accustomed to live with and enjoy that closeness. Most have fences separating lots, but it's not unusual for us to peer over our six-foot fence and say, "What's for dinner?" Or pass over a beer. Or, "What are you doing? You need some help with that?" The fact is, on my side of Louis Bay Road, most existing homes are already tall enough to peer over six-foot fences. I want to rebuild my home so that it's healthy, safe, and fits the needs of my family. There are two facts I expected to address tonight. Number one, my proposed home will make the left-side setback less non-conforming than my existing home. And number two, I'm seeking relief to exceed the lot coverage by 3.9% over what is allowed in the bylaws. I have some aerial photos, if you need to see them, of the street showing houses I referenced, 15 and 27 Louis Bay Road. I have some photographs showing, from my yard, these homes. These are two-and-a-half-story homes. It's the same that I'm proposing, a two-and-a-half-story home.
Well, we look at this just so you are aware on a case-by-case basis. We're going to look at your petition specifically, and the other houses will not bear on our decision. We'll take those if you want to submit them as exhibits. And if you have something signed by your neighbors in support of it, we can take that as well. You can bring it right up here. Thank you.
The reason I mentioned the other homes is because my opponent said there's no precedence. And there's two homes that are examples of precedence, just two houses in either direction.
Okay. Are you finished with your presentation right now? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go to the board members for questions in just a moment. I have got a couple of questions. What is the current square footage of your house? Your existing home?
Around 900 square feet, as is...
The property card says 868.
I think so.
And what is the proposed square footage of your home?
Be 2,900 square feet.
2,900. Do you have that anywhere on your plans?
I do have dimensions on the plans, but it doesn't say specifically the total cumulative square footage.
We generally like to have that information. It's a little difficult to read these plans here.
Okay.
So, 2,900?
Yes.
And how many bedrooms do you have?
Three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms. How many bedrooms are in the house right now?
Three bedrooms.
You know what the existing lot coverage is right now? I could probably get it off this...
Existing lot coverage right now is 15.4%.
Okay, so you're 15.4. And you want to go to 28.9, so basically 29%.
Yes.
So you're looking to double it?
Yes.
You're aware that we have a maximum coverage of 25?
Yes.
Okay. On the height of that widow's walk that you want to put on top, why isn't that counted as height under our bylaw?
Section 203.4 and the building height. I met with the building commissioner on two occasions to discuss it. He referenced 203.4 and read the last sentence of the second paragraph.
Just find that here, because I've got a question about that. 203.4...
Your question was, "Why isn't the railing included in that?"
The platform and the railing.
Yeah. Okay, yes, that's what we discussed. I discussed with the building...
Well, could you tell me in the bylaw where it says that? Not what you guys discussed. You've got to discuss that with us.
Do you want me to read the bylaw?
I've got it right in front of me.
Okay. He said railings are not included in the height. Not to be included in the height.
Am I missing that here? Is that right here?
It's 203.4, the last sentence of the second paragraph.
I can't remember the same paragraph. Okay.
And...
Now, "Height limitations shall not apply to chimneys, spires, cupolas, antennas, or other similar structures not intended for human occupancy."
Yes.
Wouldn't you say a deck is intended for human occupancy?
Occupancy refers to a sleeping room or some room to cook in. Because I questioned the building commissioner on that. Because it's...I asked him, "Is this clear enough?" And he responded in an email right here. The bylaw is clear. Section 203.4 also specifies that the height limitation "shall not apply to similar structures not intended for human occupancy." And that was in direct reference to the question about railings.
Well, wouldn't somebody be up there? Wouldn't they be occupying that space?
Well, there's...
Are you suggesting that... Are you suggesting that that means that only interior space is included in this? This looks to me to be exterior-specific. In my opinion...
The railing is...
Because we're the ones that you have to convince...
Yeah.
...on that one. I would suggest to you that I would include that in your height. I'm just giving you my own opinion. The other board members may not feel the same way. I read that. I think it could be more clear.
I agree, it could be more clear.
If I have to make a determination, my determination would be that that deck up there is for human occupancy. And that section of the paragraph, in my opinion, deals with exterior features of a home, not interior. It's a nice house. Had you considered maybe building something a little smaller? The houses that you reference, in my opinion, I'm very familiar with those houses on that street. They're substantially smaller than what you're proposing. I doubt any one of them is over 2,000 square feet in square footage. In fact, I can tell you right now that I approved every single one of those houses. I was sitting on the board when they were approved, and that was a long time ago. I'm just giving my own personal opinion here.
I understand. I did consider trying to reduce it smaller. For instance, my deck is included in lot coverage. It's a 14-by-14 deck on the proposed deck plan. If I were to eliminate just my deck alone, I would be coming very close to the 25%.
Well, I think it's more than just 25%. I think we look at other things. I think we look at, is this house going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? It's not just the 25% lot coverage. It's not...you just don't check off the boxes. You're in the R-25 zoning district. You need 25,000 square feet. You've got about 6,000 square feet. You're required to have 100 feet of frontage. You have 60. You're required to have 15 feet on your setback on the side. You've got 7.8. So you're really...you're really not meeting your requirements here at all. But don't feel bad, because nobody else does either. Nobody conforms. Anybody else that's on that street, they'll all have to come before us. I'll let others ask you questions, but I just want to let you know that while I think it's a nice house, I think it really needs a bigger lot than the one that you have. I think everybody is entitled to improve their property, and this board certainly supports that. And the town wants us to allow people to improve their property. But I think we have to have some reasonableness here. And I think what you're proposing on that lot, at least in my opinion, is more than I could support. So I'm going to let the others ask questions. Anthony, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
No, I just...I echo the same sentiment that you've already stated. In terms of the height limitations, I think it's pretty clear that the outdoor deck is...should be considered in the height. The chimney spires, cupolas, and antennas, or similar structures, have nothing to do with outdoor decking. You know, those are clearly spaces in which humans cannot occupy, whereas this is a space in which humans can occupy. But the...in terms of overall lot coverage, have you gone through different drafts of smaller proposals? You know, or ones that wouldn't require the setback that you've looked at? And you could potentially eliminate both things that you're asking with a smaller proposal?
Yes, I've drafted many drafts of plans. This was the best one that I came up with, and I thought I was doing a good job in trying to not make the non-conformity worse. I was trying to stay within the lot coverage. I was trying to stay within the height. I was very cautious. I was asking multiple questions multiple times with the building commissioner about the bylaws and to interpret them to me. So I did try to draft different plans.
I would like to hear from some of the neighbors that are here, so I'm going to reserve to be able to ask questions after I hear from them.
Okay. Jay, you have any questions for the petitioner?
I echo Sean's comments that, you know, it is a very nice house. And...but I think it's too large for the lot. And that's my concern. Height-wise, I do feel that that is included in the height, and that's something we'll have to discuss. Is this...this on cinder blocks now? So you're proposing a full foundation, too? Is that also correct?
It's not in the flood zone, so yes, I am proposing a full...
But you're putting in a whole new foundation?
Yes.
Equal to the old foundation? Or just inside of the old foundation?
I'm sorry, equal to the size of the old foundation?
Yes, because you...yeah. Because you did mention it's like four inches shorter on the sides, so it must be tucking it in a little bit.
Well, on the left side, it's very...it's a little...very close to the existing line.
Yep.
But however, I...the overall footprint is larger than the existing footprint.
Understood, yeah. Because it goes further back, and it goes further to the right.
Yes.
But the old foundation of cinder blocks or whatever is outside of where the new foundation will be on that short side. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's closer to the left lot line, the cinder blocks.
The cinder blocks, that's what I was getting at.
Than the post.
All right. I'm just concerned about the size and the height. And it's going to require some variances, and I'm not sure whether you qualify for a variance, given some of the...what you require to have it. It's not a non...I mean, it's a non-conforming lot, but it's a standard-sized lot in that area, I believe. And, you know, you still have to conform within distances and heights and everything in regard, even though it's a smaller lot. That's all I had.
Okay. John, questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I'm going to probably echo most of the comments made by the board already. I think roof deck does exceed the 35 feet. So, you know, that's an issue. I would like to see you get closer to 25% here. Now, the sunroom, is there heat in the sunroom? Is it a heated room?
I think I would like to have it four-season, yes.
So did you include it in the square footage?
Yes.
You did?
Yeah.
And even though there's...at this point, there's no heat. You would like to include it down the road, right?
No, I think I would like to make it a four-season room. So I included it, yes.
Okay, gotcha. I guess, yeah, so those are my concerns. It's the size of the dwelling and the height. So I think I echo most of the concerns of our audience as well, so...
So I'm hearing a lot about the size and the height, but can I have some feedback as to what size is reasonable? What square footage is reasonable?
You're asking me what I think... And I don't know the dimensions of those other lots and those two houses that we approved that are two-story houses. But it would be along those lines, square footage and height. Those houses probably aren't any more than 26 feet. I'm just throwing a guess out there. Yours is 35-plus. So if you want an idea of what I would support, it would be along those lines. And that's not just for you, by the way. That's for anybody that comes in that's probably on that street, on Lorena. Lorena's lots are very similar in size. So those are very small lots on both those streets right there. They're smaller than the average lots in that area. The average lots in that area go up around 8,500 to 10,000. This one right here is what? This one right here is what?
Sixty-six.
So those are my thoughts. I think... Barbara, questions?
I think we have got the same concerns about, you know, the square footage of this dwelling, compared to the size of the lot, and then the height. So I think, I think you need to come back with some proposals that would address our concerns about the square footage and, you know, I don't, you know, it's essentially going to be a three-story house, right? With the roof deck?
Well, the bylaws classify these as two-and-a-half stories.
Yes, it's called a habitable attic.
Yeah, even in the bylaws, under habitable attic is permitted under here, section 203.4. It is permitted. That's why I did the best that I could. I thought I was doing the best thing I could by trying to stay within the setbacks and limitations, and trying to take the advice from the building commissioner about my height and what was included and what was not. I did the best I could to try to get clear information.
I think it's important for petitioners to understand is just because we have a thirty-five-foot height limitation, doesn't mean we're going to allow thirty-five feet on raise and replace. Under the alteration and extension, it might be a little bit different, but we still have to look at the totality of the petition, and not just meeting the setbacks and the height. Again, I think we're all in support of allowing you to improve your property. It needs improvement, as we would with all of your neighbors. If anybody wants to come in and bring a reasonable petition to us, we certainly have an open mind. We look to say yes on every petition, because the building department's already told you no. That's the reason you're in front of us, because you went in for a building permit, you said can't do it. You don't meet the criteria of the bylaw. So we can hear from the neighbors, I'm sure they're here and they may want to speak to this, and we will let you speak. But it would be my suggestion that you kind of go back to the drawing board on this and listen to the feedback that you got from us, and at least from my perspective, I'd take a look at those houses that are on the street. That's where we would be kind of, at least from my perspective, consistent with that size of a home on that road. And that's pretty much the limit, and it was when we approved the first one back then. That was a big house when it first came in front of us. We were like, whoa, this is a little bit big, but, you know, people need more living space. These are all little cottages. They've been there since the 50s. People bought them to come down and use them for ten weeks, most of them. Over the years, a lot of people have improved them. It's a very nice area over there. Everybody loves it. Everybody has a good time, close to the beach, walk down to the water. Yeah.
Yeah.
So those are, those are our concerns. What I would like to do, though, now, is I would like to hear from some of the people if they would like to speak. So instead of saying, is there anybody here in favor of this petition, I'm going to ask first, is there anybody here opposing this petition? Oh, we've got a couple of hands. Okay, well, who would like to start off first? You would like to, ma'am? Why don't you come on up to the microphone? Please identify yourself and...
Some of them wrote something?
Give us your thoughts, yeah. And did any of you write a letter, by the way, that want to? Okay, would you prefer to speak or hear me write your letter?
I think we all did. I did send a letter.
Okay, and what is your name, ma'am?
Carol Walsh. I'm the proud owner of that first house that you thought was large.
Well, at the time, we thought it was a little large, but I think it fits in very nicely down there.
And, and I tried to really take that into account. I take exception to Matt saying I have a two-and-a-half-story home. I do not. It's about two thousand square feet. I do not have a habitable attic. It's a crawl, you go up, and it's a crawl space. There is not one thing in that attic. So I take exception to that. It's a two-story home, about two thousand square feet. We're down here year-round now. I tried really hard to make that fit into the neighborhood. I went from having two feet on one side, because it was a nonconforming lot of a garage that was there before we bought the home. That, we moved that, that came down, so that setback went from two feet to eleven feet. We had eleven on the other side. So we have eleven feet. We did not need, we needed the variance, because it was supposed to be fifteen that we never had. So, but I also had to move my bulkhead, because that was going to cut into the eleven feet, and you people asked me to put it in the back, which I did. I think that this design also has on the two feet, or excuse me, on the seven feet he has, I think there's a side door with stairs that come down that may be cutting into that seven-something as well, which brings it even closer to that property lot. And I just think that it's an over, and I did not sign when he came around, my husband did. I did not, because I wanted to see what the plans were. But I just think that it's really a very large house for that small a lot. I feel as though my house was large, and I even said to him, if I had it to do over again, I wouldn't do it as big. And that's mostly because I don't want to clean it.
Thank you for your, thank you for your comments. Thank you. Sir? Please identify yourself for the record.
My name's Michael McCauley, and I live at 23 Lewis Bay Road. I'm just flabbergasted. He's asking for relief because he has a small lot. That doesn't make any sense to me. I just want to get on the record that we are opposed to any variances, any special permits, and just have them billed by right. And I told him that from the get-go, just build by right, you'll have no problem. And this is what he came up with, and, I don't know, he's, a lot of the signatures that were, were signed, people had no idea what they were looking at. As you saw, the plans are very faint, and when you're looking at them in the sun, you know, it comes up to you in your driveway or whatever, you can't, you can't make out what's even there. So a lot of people are just trying to be good neighbors, and yeah, 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 you know, and we were the ones who refused to sign, because I took a close look at him, and I said, no, I know what he's capable, he's a developer, and he's going to go to whatever, he's going to get whatever he can get out of it. That's, that's the MO. And just want to get on the record, we're opposed to any variances, any special permits. We just have them billed within the bylaws and no problems.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else want to come on up, sir?
Thomas Ashmore, 27 Lewis Bay Road in West Charlotte. And I made the mistake, in my opinion, of signing his paper to begin with, when he come over, and I did not really look at his plans that much, because I knew he was friends of Mr. McCauley, and I just trusted him. But now I'm completely opposed of anything that he's put up there. The house is just enormous, and it would overpower all the houses on the sides of it, and the deck in the back is scary. So anyway, that's my opinion, and I oppose anything that he's put down there. And I don't think he's giving you the right heights or anything else when he's doing it, because I know it's much higher than that. I know what the height of my house is, and...
Okay, well, thank you very much, sir.
My name is Elaine Howe. I live at 22 Lewis Bay Road, right across from Moreno's. When they came to me with the petition, I very happily signed it for them to be able to tear down their house and build a new house. I think anybody should have that, be able to do that. But not, me not being able to really read, you know, the plans, I really thought that it was over, too rambunctious. That's all I have to say. I welcome them to build, but I think they, it's such a tiny, it's, my lot is two times larger than their lot, and they're putting this big, that's all.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Anyone else care to speak? Okay, seeing none. I didn't ask, but I will ask, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this petition other than you, sir? Seeing none. Is there anything that you'd like to add before we close the hearing?
Yes, I've heard the board. Thank you for listening. Like I said, I took the information that I was given from the building commissioner and the bylaws, and I thought I was doing what was in my right. But I do hear all of you. I would like to withdraw my application without prejudice. I would like to request that from the board.
Okay, all right. Anybody prepared to make a motion to allow the petition or to...
I'd be happy to make a motion to allow it withdrawn without prejudice.
Okay, we have a second? I'm just going to make a quick comment before we move it along to a vote. I think you heard where we are, my suggestion would be to just get a flavor of the neighborhood. You know what type of houses are there. You know the largest houses that we've approved. That's pretty much probably what we would approve. It's a small lot. Again, we think people should have the right to, you know, redevelop their property reasonably, and I think we're reasonable people. So I would suggest that you go back to the drawing board. Looks like you put a lot of thought into this, so go back to the drawing board and bring us something in the future, and hopefully we can get you approved and get you a new house. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, and any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none? Let me just make sure here, that's, we're going to do that withdrawal on the request for special permit. You'd like to withdraw the request for variance as well?
Yes, I would like to withdraw on the request for variance.
Similar motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. That petition is withdrawn without prejudice.
Thank you.
We wish you luck, and perhaps we'll see you in the future.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, folks. Do we, do we have any business, further business?
It's nothing to vote on, just to be aware of the calendar for...
The calendar?
Yes.
Okay. I saw that, actually. I'm glad you printed that up for us.
I'm going to keep, keep a copy, is that all right?
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn?
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody want to hang around?
No.
Okay, we are adjourned.